These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, January 19th, 2015. Call the order please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Nowak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes for regular session, January 5th, 2015. Any issues, changes, modifications? Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Consent agenda this evening? A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $475,515.98. And B is election inspectors fees for 2015.
Will we accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Thank you. Presentations this evening, we have the recognition of water plant manager Terry Goujon on his retirement from United Water after 37 years of service. Supervisor Mike Lewinsky first.
We're here to recognize a very valuable employee to both United Water and to the city of Alpena. Terry started his career in 1977. He worked for 11 years for the city of Alpena at the water filtration plant. And he's worked for United Water for 26 years. Four of those years have been as the plant manager. He's served various roles at the plant. Very dedicated employee, very valuable employee. And has so much knowledge that we can't pick everything out of him. But the last four years, the guys have done a pretty good job. And I think he's trained a successor to him, Mike Collins, very well. And I just wanted to, the city of Alpena and the residents of Alpena and the people that are served by the water department to recognize his many years of very, very valuable service. Good employee, good person. And we want to wish him the best in his retirement. And just found out recently that he's engaged to be married.
Oh.
Another step in his life.
Terry, come up. We've got a couple of certificates of appreciation. For this amount, 37 years of dedicated service for the city of Alpena. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. You can very well, yes sir. Yeah? By all means.
I'd just like to say a few words. I mean, I've been at the water plant for 37 years, like Mike said. I was looking back and thinking back about all the changes that occurred at the plant. I mean, it's pretty much, almost a continuous process. And one slight quirk seemed to show up. A quirk of fate, say. When I got there in 1977, a major project underway happened to be the lining of the intake. I was drawing a high-density polyethylene liner through the entire intake. Now, the intake line is the absolute beginning of the process. That's how the plant gets the water. And my last year, the major project, actually covered a couple of years, was sealing of the clear well. The inside end of it to prevent leakage from outside or prevent leakage going from the well out. And that is the end of the process. That is where the water, where the city is pumped from. So over my career, I've seen, I started with very beginning, a major improvement. Ended my career at the end with a major improvement. And virtually everything in between, I've seen some kind of an alteration, change take place. So I thought that was kind of an interesting aspect. Wanted to share that. Thank you for the work.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, no announcements this evening. Proclamation for the Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week. Whereas the Friends of Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary was established in October 2010 to support the mission of the Thunder Bay Marine Sanctuary to identify, protect, conserve, and enhance the natural and maritime heritage resources, values, and qualities of the National Marine Sanctuary system for this and future generations throughout the nation. Whereas the Thunder Bay Film Festival brought to the residents of Alpena through a joint effort of the San Francisco International Ocean Film Festival and the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary hopes to bring a large ocean awareness and environment for interactive learning and inspiration for local filmmakers in the community, or to the community. And whereas the Thunder Bay Film Festival will utilize the power... Excuse me. Sorry, I think there's a glitch, but that's okay. Let me start over. Whereas the Thunder Bay Film Festival will utilize the powerful form of visual communication film festivals offer as a means to communicate ocean and Great Lakes issues and bring cultural events to the Alpena and surrounding communities in the hopes that these films inspire a shared vision of conservation of all marine environments through its stunning, sometimes controversial and always conversation starting films. And whereas the Great Lakes region, often considered the third coast, is a vital part of global waterways, thus making the global waterways issues, or our issues too. And whereas the Thunder Bay Film Festival explores waterways issues through some of the most impressive ocean and Great Lakes-inspired films from around the world, complemented by social events, educational opportunities, and discussions with award-winning internationally recognized filmmakers. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of January 18th, 2015 as Thunder Bay Film Festival Week in the city of Alpena. Signed by myself today. I believe that would leave. Would you like to give a quick anything about the festival?
I would, actually, since you asked. Well, since I have the opportunity, I'd like to say thank you very much to the city council for recognizing and requiring this week Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week. It's been a crazy time preparing for this festival, as Councilman Sexton knows. And I've got some great news coming in that people are coming, we have filmmakers coming from literally all over the world. Too many to even fit on our panel. So it's a good problem to have. Little bug, if you don't have it yet, you can still buy it. So thank you very much, and I really appreciate it.
Okay, no report of officers this evening. Communications and petitions. Target Alpena Development Corporation 2014-15 Quarterly Report. Jim Plarich is here to do that.
Thank you for having me. Virginia, the report that I provided to everyone, the first subject that I outlined there was our SBDC activity, which is Small Business Development Center and basically business, small business startups. Those investment numbers over the last quarter have been considerably slower than in previous years. I'll get to a reason why I think that is a little bit later in the report, but they have been slower. We're also with the SBDC, we're exploring opportunities to them, and we will be having some small business development workshops through the chamber, sponsored by the Chamber and Target and SBDC. And the schedule for those seminars will be announced soon. As you go through the activity report, basically you see a total of 91 clients served and contacted and prep hours of 232.6 hours. Three new business starts, six jobs created. Very small port, 21,000 in capital formation. But an interesting note that you'll see in the report that we've never had in here before is annualized increased sales data that we inserted in there. And that data is from businesses that the SBDC councils and/or that we've provided loans in the past for. And annualized, right now in 2014, they showed a sales at about $7.8 million in increased sales over the prior year, which is very impressive. As we reported earlier and last year throughout 2014, employment opportunities in the Alpena area increased across all of our business sectors. Over the past year and a half, we've been reporting the lowest, among the lowest unemployment rates in our 11 county region. In November, just recently, Alpena County posted an unemployment rate of 5.8%. The state average is 5.7. Please note that the last time that local unemployment rates fell below 6% was September of 2005. And before that was October of 2000, at 3.8%. Now, the interesting perspective in that is if you look at the 300-plus new jobs that will be coming with some of our previously announced development projects, this year will certainly help to stabilize. I see that stabilizing it, it will take out a little bit of the seasonality out of some of our jobs. So we'll stabilize our employment a little bit more, and I'm certain that it will drive our unemployment numbers lower into 2015. I'm also certain that some of the reduction in our small business development activity is directly coupled with employment. As our employment numbers, you know, obviously rise, people are better served and employed, and you're going to get a lot smaller number of people that are going to be looking at starting their own businesses. So I see that as being a part of the reason. It's interesting to point out that our area remains a very hot conversation topic in much commercial retail, business sectors, restaurants and that type of thing, where assessing Alpena options. While things did slow down during the Christmas holidays, they've again meet forward in earnest, and we're very busy entertaining them. One of the things I outlined as we move forward, whether it's city, township, or preskill, wherever site, you guys really like shovel-ready site projects, or shovel-ready sites and that kind of thing. Those will be starting to become as a premium as we build out some of the other lots in the future. So one of the things we really want to keep our eye on is, and I'll touch on that in a little bit, is how do we make it easy for those people? And how do we make it easier for developers to develop those properties? So I'll speak to that in a minute. In regards to our unmanned aerial systems project, that became a reality last September when we executed an agreement with New Air, which is the manager of the FAA-designated test site in New York, and their operational partners in Massachusetts. That agreement, and I'll touch on it again, created one of the largest academically-driven and industry-supported UAS testing and developing alliances in the United States. Basically, when you look at that, you're looking at the entire northeastern tier of the US, from Massachusetts to New York to Michigan, being partners or alliance in that integration of unmanned aerial systems into the airspace. So it's very important. There's still a lot of work to be done, but we do look forward to serving our first customers sometime in the spring when the weather breaks. We have several interested parties, so hopefully we'll start flight testing sometime in the spring. January, last Tuesday, we held, Target held a strategic planning meeting where we really started looking at what do you want 2015 to look like in 2016. A lot of the initiatives discussed, as I outlined in the report, centered on developing, looking at our riverfront, looking at our primary corridors in and out of town, and then also looking at what roles Target might be able to play from a strategic standpoint as far as the possibility of purchasing, real estate purchasing, buildings, does it make sense? So we're exploring some of those opportunities now. And we'll see how that goes forward into 2015. In a nutshell, we really want to do, as an organization, is make certain that we're making it as easy as possible for people to spend money and invest in Alpena. I think in today's paper, it was outlined, some of the tourism numbers that Mary Beth, I think, had posted, which are really staggering. When you look at the growth of the tourism sector, that's a lot of money. When you look at 450,000 visitors here in 2013, I think it was 2013. We want to make sure we're maximizing the potential for all of those people to enjoy and stay and spend and spend their time in Alpena. And I think that's one of the things that we'll start wrapping our heads around really is, are we prepared for it? Are we doing the right things? And are we serving all of those people, whether they're the primary residents, secondary residents, or visitors? Are we treating them in the best fashions? That's all I had. Any questions?
I just wanted to add a couple of things that Jim didn't mention, though, that Target has worked with the city on. One, of course, has been the hotel project. Actually, it was the first contact with the developers. And next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, the Brownfield plan will, has finally been scheduled to go before the Michigan Strategic Fund Board in Lansing. And so that's really the final step. We've got the tax abatement approved by the State Tax Commission back in December. And hopefully, next Tuesday, we are anticipating that it will be approved, the Brownfield. And that's really the last, the financial incentives. And as from what I understand, their financing is now all in place. That was part of what MEDC was waiting to get, which they've received. So everything is go here once the weather breaks for that project to continue forward. A big thanks to Jim for his involvement in that. The other is, we have submitted a revised wetland mitigation plan for our 23 North property. That will be very important. We are working with a potential project up there, which was, which is really the impetus in doing that. But what this will do, in the revised, is it will cover any and all wetland mitigation that we need to do on that entire piece of property. Which means, no matter what happens, whether this project that we believe will move ahead, but if for any reason it doesn't, we are still poised for development on that land. Because now we will, once this is approved, and we're expecting the permit to be issued, hopefully by the end of February, early March, that will be, that will not be an issue in any other discussions with potential developers as far as the wetland. That will have been resolved. So if our project, the one that we're working on now, moves ahead, plus the Thunder Bay Transportation Authority, which is developing in the township right to the north at the southeast corner of Hamilton Road in US 23, I think those two together will be, help to be an impetus for further development out there. We'll finally begin to see some fruits coming to bear after all the years that we've had, you know, I think we bought that property in 2000. So it's been like 15 years or getting near there. So it'll be nice to begin to see some things happen. And again, Jim's involvement has been very instrumental.
Thanks, Greg. And I appreciate that. And that speaks a lot of what you look at development projects that are occurred, whether it's in the 32 corridor now, or if it's in downtown, they carry similar signature in it. Those particular places were pretty much ready. They're pretty much turnkey for those developers to walk in. And that's something, like I said, we really looked hard at last week when our board got together and said, is that, how do we make that happen more often? How do we make it easy? How do we make it, you know, for guys to invest in Alpena? And that's really what we'll really be wrapping our heads around this year.
You didn't get any real questions, you don't get to escape. Just a quick comment, I have a couple of questions for you, maybe I can clarify. Glad that you mentioned the article and mentioned tourism. You know, a lot of communities get beat up a little bit for focusing on tourism to a degree, but it brings people here, it brings potential residents, potential business. And I think the guys that opened the brewery is a good example. And they came here as tourists, and they're coming back as a business. Is it fair to say that our future in the unarmed, unarmed, sorry, unmanned aerial systems is more on the testing and not the production side of that?
I think that, I look at, and I've always treated that with a little bit of a tempered outlook. And I look at it and say, you know what? I want to, it's kind of like crawl, walk, run. I want to, I really want to be able to serve a customer and have them understand what they can expect and be consistent. And then I think, once you get through those gates, you know, they'll look at it and they'll say, hey, this is a great opportunity. We need to build up a little infrastructure, I need to house people and do different things like that. We're trying to work on that kind of stuff now. I think the idea of manufacturing them here is certainly possible. I think it's a little bit longer-term issue than, you know, just creating an enormous test site and saying, come on in and set up shop. But I do think that there's a big opportunity for those people to have, whether they're located in Virginia or California, wherever they might be, to look at us from a satellite operation to start, and then potentially grow larger and larger. Because really, if you look at it, there's really only now, with our inclusion in it, there's really only eight, I think roughly eight places to test in the US. And we're one of them. And so, you know, longer term, you know, as a company looks at that, a longer-term philosophy or planning would probably dictate they would want to be increased opportunity to one of those sites.
And you mentioned, you know, the perspective developers like turnkey, and that obviously makes sense. You know, in the city, we don't have a lot of that. Would be your advice to take like a Ripley Street Station, or just an, you know, an existing building and make it more attractive for developers? Or is there anything we can really do to do that?
That's something we're exploring now, is what grant opportunities there might be. Like for instance, if Target took ownership in a particular property, does that lend itself more to grants for us to rehabilitate it, or tear it down, or do whatever to make it more site-ready? So that's some of the things that we're working on now. We had some meetings that touched on that subject last Friday afternoon with the MEDC, and we'll just continue that dialogue. And if I could address, you've mentioned the tourism and that kind of thing, and I'll tell you, from my perspective, I look at that, the branding effort, the, and in our growth of tourism is really being the part of the gate, or the highway to attract a different demographic, or attract a certain demographic here, younger, somebody who enjoys that, our type of lifestyle, because it's really targeted to a specific demographic as our future workforce. I really see it as being an attractive attraction tool for whether it's ESI, or whether it's Star Staffing, or whether it's, you know, Michigan Works. The ability to fill those voids and look at it saying 10 years from now, you know, we have a certain, let's say, age window. You know, we want a bunch of recruits coming behind us, right? And that are younger, and I really think that the CVB's mission is a perfect path to fill that, fill that void. One of the things that I've learned over the last several months working with Jim is that basically, when you're building an economy, you're building a house for them, so to speak. And right now, I feel like we're laying a very strong foundation with all the businesses that are here currently. You know, we all want to see the bigger factories and such move in, and those could come, but you know, the first things that we have to all put in place, build a strong foundation, have a workforce that is shovel-ready, so to speak. So those types of companies and opportunities can come in here. So Jim's got a lot of really good ideas, kind of inspired me on some of the ideas from the waterfront, the riverfront, and the marina areas. And I wrote a couple of things for my page, just to kind of cover my visions for those particular areas too. But that was all cascaded from conversations I've started with Jim on, you know, how to build the strongest economy. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No unfinished business, new business this evening? A is planning commission member nomination. Adam?
The departure of Mike Lewinsky, the planning commission has one vacancy. Two applicants submitted applications and introduced themselves to the planning commission at the last meeting. The planning commission noted that they appreciated the enthusiasm both applicants deserved, and noted that both would make good planning commissioners. As there's only one vacancy, it's time the majority of the planning commissioners have recommended the selection of Dan Mitchell. Although he is new to the area, he brings the experience of serving on the Kinross Planning Commission, as well as Kinross Village Council, where he drafted a number of ordinances, including the medical marijuana ordinance. He's, Dan's a retired airport veteran and recently moved here to be go through his summer with the state police in Dana here today. Tara Stone has also introduced herself to the planning commission. She lived in downtown Alpena for a year and currently is employed with Colston Chartered Tours. She has volunteered for a number of community activities, including the DEA Design Committee and the Brown Trail Festival. Again, the planning commissioners noted that both applicants would appear to make good planning commissioners, and asked that whomever is not chosen for the current vacancy is kept on file for future potential cases.
Did you say Dan was here? Must be him, okay.
He said he is here, I think. Thank you, Adam. When you, just real quick, when you ask, when the commission asks that the application be kept on file, is that something you're asking the clerk? Is that something you would do? Because I caught on that when I read it earlier.
Might have been a poor terminology on my part, but just typically, I'll speak to those applications.
Okay.
I don't have to keep some as well.
Okay.
As something we, you know, obviously we don't usually throw them out anyway, but obviously, the thought, yeah. Tara's a good candidate, or Dan, both very good, so.
It's pretty interesting where we are with this, that it doesn't ordinarily happen where we have more than one applicant for a seat. Because you'll normally see that it'll be on a consent agenda, and the reason why it's on a consent agenda is because they only have one qualified applicant. So for me, it was, it was pretty good. I don't even know if it's happened twice since I've been in my...
It happened at least once when I was...
One other time?
In the position, Adam.
Oh, okay.
There were more than one, and they kind of said, they're all good, and do it in your lap.
I know where I'm coming from, I guess from my perspective, is that the planning commission does their homework and went through the process. I'm assuming they got a presentation from each of the applicants, and they had the opportunity to do some background and whatnot. Me personally, I would tend to go with the recommendation of their majority. But there again, that's just me. I'll wait for someone to make a motion of some type. But it certainly was good to have two people, two individuals. And not only two individuals, but two individuals that are very new to our area, as at least I gathered from something that Tara wrote, that she had, she may have been here before, lived here before, but newer to the area recently. So that's, that's very, very cool. Goes to show the interest we have in our new, hate to call people transplants, but I hear that so often that I just said it, so, but very good. I'll leave it over to anyone else.
It's a tough, in the past, I was on the planning commission for several years, and in the past, the planning commission's always very clearly made a recommendation to council, and we said, rubber stamp, okay, if that's what you want. But this time, it's not going to work out that way. I suggest that we send both back and say, decide. You decide, and then come to us for approval. You're going to be working with whoever is chosen. And I think having somebody who's already had experience is wonderful, but the planning commission needs to decide, that I think, that's my belief.
The majority of them do.
We always have done it that way.
And that might have been just my experience, or where I'm coming from, I didn't necessarily, I didn't ask them to make a vote in that particular instance, I just asked them to give me their thoughts. So I just, I kind of took, but the responses I got is what they, how they would have voted, but there was no special vote, so it's certainly something I can do in the future if you'd like, or I can do this time as well.
In the future is probably a good idea, but it seems like they're comfortable with recommending Dan, and I'd make the motion to appoint, I'm saying Dan, it's Mitchell, right?
Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell to the planning commission.
Second.
I, and I guess just on a brief discussion before we take the vote and close the option, but with both of you Adams relatively new to the position, and Greg had been seated there for quite some time, the, we are the governing body, and we do, as a council, we are the selectors. So I don't know, under normal circumstances, if there are more than one, I don't know if it, if it, if there's anything that actually says that this is planning commission follow it, and you two, I guess, sat on that for a while, I'm sorry, didn't mean to leave everybody out, maybe everybody in the room, myself has sat there at some point.
Everybody, but.
Everybody up here. But I don't have the experience to know, do they, would they normally take an actual vote during an open meeting, or would it normally be something that you would just kind of gather some?
It kind of varied. In fact, initially, when I came here, the reason the planning commission got involved is because if we had a vacancy, suddenly, without the planning commission's knowledge, a name appeared on the council, the council appointed them, and they had no input. And they felt there should at least be some. And so then, we started asking that, if, once we got applicants, to present them to the commission, where they could then make a recommendation. As I said, in most cases, it's often been just one person. We have had, I think, one dime, up to three, that I had when I was there for one seat. And I know, you know, sometimes it was clear, and they did, you know, recommend a person to the council, in other cases, where they felt both were very qualified, is they said, it doesn't matter which one is appointed, they will be good representatives and good planning commissioners, and then just left it up to the council. So it's kind of gone all different directions, just depending on, on the candidates and the commission members at the time, so. But like I said, it didn't start off that way at all, it was really just the council, they would get somebody, and the next thing, it was on the agenda.
The one time that we had the three people that applied, we had people that was varying opinions, and we kept having to come back, which was getting kind of embarrassing. So we finally did a secret ballot, and we tallied it, and I told them.
Yeah, because it did, I think, take a couple of meetings, to do that, to get a recommendation out of the council, so.
We had pretty concrete evidence this time.
Yeah, at least here, you know, it sounds like, you know, even if it was informally, is that the majority seemed to be leaning towards Mr. Mitchell. So, you know, I guess I would go that that is their recommendation at this point in time.
I'm fine with that.
Yes.
Okay. Call her, open.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Adam, and congratulations on that. Dan?
Just wanted you to sweat it out a little.
You'll have to come in and write.
We sent them a letter.
Okay. You will get a letter from Karen, then you'll need to come in and be sworn in.
Sworn in?
Hopefully not.
They don't want it after all that.
Guaranteed?
Don't go away.
Okay, and B is replacement of the 2000 E1 rescue pumper. Chief is here for that. Good evening.
Got a couple of photographs for you. The fire department operates several fire apparatus, including a 2000 E1 rescue pumper. This is our most heavily-used piece of fire apparatus, has at least twice as many miles as any other fire truck that we have. And the reason for that is that it carries our jaws of life and rescue equipment, and assists the ambulance all over town. There are some problems with that, it's a very heavy-duty fire pumper, just like the other fire pumpers, and so it's not a real efficient chase vehicle, if you will. It also brings with it, in addition to excessive maintenance costs when you run a vehicle that heavily, a little bit of a public perception problem, but probably once a month, I get, and I know Greg gets, Karen gets, inquiries from citizens, why does that big expensive $500,000 truck need to go out to assist the ambulance? And the reason for that, and the answer that we give once a month, is that the crew on that truck is providing assistance to the ambulance crew to provide optimal patient care. Four paramedics or three paramedics is better than two in serious medical emergencies. But the people on that truck are the last people we have available, so if it's not able to respond immediately to a fire scene, there's nobody left back at the station to bring a fire truck. So it needs to be able to do both, both purposes. But I think we have a solution. That particular truck has developed a tank leak, and to fix that tank, it's about halfway down where the piping meets the tank, to fix that, they're going to have to disassemble the truck, take all the hose off, take the top off the truck, go down from the top, try and fix it, if they can't fix it, take the tank out the top, put it back in. It's at least a $5,000 repair on a truck that's pretty heavily, pretty heavily used already. And I'm afraid we'd be putting bad money after good. So what we're recommending at this point, and what we're requesting of you, and that, by the way, is our first-line rescue truck, it's got a 1,250 gallon pump, and carries a 500 gallon water tank, which currently carries about 200, because we can only fill a half hole without releasing back out. It does have a foam system, plus 75,000 miles on it. And those are, those are a couple of shots of the current truck, as you can see, it's a full-size fire pumper, just like the others. Now, we do have more than one, we've got Engine 1, Engine 2, and Tower 1 that all have pumps, so there are three other full-size fire trucks. And the truck that we're proposing meets the ISO requirements as a Class 1 pumper, just like the old one did, just half the size and half the cost. As you can see on this shot, we're getting quite a bit of corrosion, it's an aluminum body, and they don't rot, they corrode, but the same, same kind of, don't rust, they corrode, but the same kinds of problems, which is a big bubble on one side. This is basically what we're proposing. We're saying we can do the same job with a truck that's half the size, half the weight, half the cost, but still meets all the same ISO requirements, still has firefighting capabilities, still has foam, still carries a 1,000 to 1,500 gallon a minute pump, it'll do all the same things, but it's much smaller and more efficient. I think the citizens will be happier, and I think it'll do the job just as well as the old one for what we're using it for. The current truck has a GBRW, Gross Vehicle Weight Rating, of almost 20,000, I'm sorry, of the current truck, the truck we're trying for, has a GW 19.5 versus 44,000 pounds in the current full-size unit, so it's about half the weight. The replacement cost is about half, the new truck's going to cost us about 210. If we wait until the end of the replacement cycle, and we are moving it up a little bit, but if we wait until the end of the replacement cycle for the old truck, it would cost us about 450, assuming that they hadn't gone up a lot by that. It is a smaller and more maneuverable unit, and the best part is, other departments that have made the same kind of a switch, and the same kind of a scenario, have seen up to a 40% reduction in maintenance costs and operating costs, fuel, brakes, other kinds of things. We did confer with Doug Rosowski, our DPW head mechanic, and he did support the idea, he says that the old truck is, is getting pretty worn, and he did support that it's a good idea to change it, and it's a good idea to change it to a lighter duty vehicle. DPW does operate a number of F-550 vehicles, which is the base vehicle this new truck is built on, so parts and expertise and tools and so forth are all compatible. This is a couple of other shots of trucks of this type or this class, now it has to be bid, so it may not be this exact truck, it may be a different brand, but something in that basic idea. You can see the cabinetry, there's room for our jaws of life, there's room for a positive pressure fan, everything that we absolutely have to carry will fit, including hose, because we do use the rescue truck to lay hose into the engine, structure fire, one will go to the fire, one will go to the hydrant and lay in. It can still carry five to 800 feet of five-inch hose, it has actually a larger pump than the old truck, and we can still use it for that purpose, but because it's smaller and more maneuverable, it may actually be better at it. It's another brand of the same kind of truck. And while I have your attention, I just wanted to note that today is the last day for Bill Lamar, he's one of our firefighter paramedics, he's been here 34 years, he says, oh, I don't want any fanfare, I don't want anything, I don't want anything, well, too bad, that period is his last day. So what I'm looking for, folks, is to answer any questions that you might have, and see if you think it's a good idea to, and if so, I'd like to go off to bed and see if they can get us a new truck.
What would happen to the old truck?
At this particular, that's a good point, I'm glad you brought it up. At this particular point, for the next three months or so, it has traded value, not very impressive traded value, but about $35,000. And the reason that it has traded, yeah, I know, 450,000.
450,000.
That's how it works. Probably went to 200 when it drove off the lot, you know how that goes. But it does have some. The reason that timing is of the essence, is that you can finance a used piece of fire apparatus until it's 15 years old. After 15 years old, you can't finance it anymore. People who buy used fire trucks, little villages and towns that can't afford to buy new fire trucks, generally have to finance them. So if we don't replace this truck now and trade it in, we won't be able to buy some, it just won't have any value anymore. And that's a darn shame, but that's, that's the way it is. So the intent would be to pass this truck on to a dealer that will sell it to somebody else, and then buy a new one. Possibly not the same dealer, in fact, probably not the same dealer. There are brokers that deal just with used fire apparatus, it's a specialty market.
So what you're saying, so what you just meant by that is that it's, you're not going to trade it in for the new vehicle with the dealer you're buying the new vehicle from?
Yes, we're going to sell it to a dealer for about 35,000, that's what they appraised it at, and then we're going to turn around, buy a new truck, taking that 35,000 and adding to it the balance.
Like a person would.
To make a new purchase.
Okay.
So it's not quite like going to the Ford dealer and trading one in, but same idea, get rid of the old truck and get a new truck.
You mentioned that currently, we put our last firefighters on that truck.
Yes, sir.
In the station, so it has to double as a fire truck, sorry. Are you confident the smaller truck with, it's going to, you know, obviously holds less gallons, that that's still adequate for a first responding to a fire?
Yes, it does carry less gallonage, but the city is almost 100% hydrogenated, with the exception of Cow Island, so water capacity isn't really a problem. Pump capacity is, and the new one actually has a larger pump. But another thing that we've been doing lately operationally is we change the response so that we have tier one and tier two medical calls. On tier one medical calls, very serious medical calls, we send two people, just like we always have. On tier two medical calls, however, we've gone to only sending one person, which is another reason why we need a smaller truck, because it's hard for one guy to drive that big truck and be able to see everything, visibility-wise. This is basically a glorified pickup truck, so anybody can do it.
Yeah, it looks like a pickup with a box on it.
But the point is, I want to leave somebody at the station to take the real engine to a fire, or to take an ambulance to get another ambulance call, because that happens fairly frequently. I would rather do that than do what we've done in the past, and respond back to the station with that rescue pumper, to drop that off and grab an ambulance or an engine and go to the fire. So that actually, that actually works into it, I'm trying to leave one guy back and send only one guy out on a little truck if I can. Just in the last couple of weeks, we've been using the old Echo vehicle for that, you may have seen it zooming around town, it is much more efficient, much more cost-effective than we're driving the big rescue with one guy to assist the ambulance. So the old Blue Echo unit's been used until we can replace it with a fire truck.
Just out of curiosity, if it has a bigger pump, and you mentioned Cow Island isn't hydrogenated, well, could you use a pump in the river to serve people on Cow Island if you had a bad fire?
There are two dry hydrants on Cow Island, one is a really, really hard draft, it's 150 feet up from the river, and so that's very hard to use. One on the other side, though, on the western side of the island, we do, we are able to pump from. And this truck, and any of the other trucks that, for that matter, could pull water in from that dry hydrant and then pump it to the fire. Currently, our tactical plan for Cow Island is we request mutual aid from Alpena Township and Maple Ridge. Maple Ridge has a vacuum tanker that can make that 150-foot draft, because that's what they do off the rural areas. They establish the water supply for us and pump to us, and we deal with the fire.
It's good to know, thank you.
Good question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the value you get for the old truck, $35,000, even with the repairs it needs, you're still going to get 35?
Yes, yes. However, we'll wait much longer than that with the next repair, but at the moment, yes, that's true.
Thank you.
I understand correctly that what we're doing is we're just looking for authorization from Tulsa to be able to put this up to bid.
Yes, sir.
Was this originally on the replacement schedule?
Never do a check.
2022, I believe.
2022.
At the current rate of deterioration, however, it never would have made 2022.
Okay. And the, did they give you an average likely expectancy of this truck, I mean, do they usually average five to seven years cheaper?
No, actually, we hope to get 10 to 15. But again, if it's half as expensive, even if it has a shorter life year, it will still be advantageous to us. The Tower is the only truck with a really, really long life, because it gets used so seldom, and Karen, and Greg and I just met on that, moved several of the trucks back in the replacement schedule, where they would have been replaced earlier, but because of the condition they're in, and the way that we're using them, we're able to extend it out a little bit. The Tower truck was actually planned for replacement, it's a million-dollar truck, and we've since scheduled it for the possibility of rehab or refurbishment in, what, 10 years or so?
Yeah, approximately.
That may not even be necessary, it's an exceptional rate, it really doesn't need anything at this point. I think we're just, miss that million-dollar cost, I think we need to scoop it up and bid in the wild.
Yeah, we were looking at 2023 for that. We did say that in 2019, we would evaluate the latter truck at that time to see if we needed to accelerate the refurbishment, but we're looking at, instead of a million-dollar plus for a new, it'd be about a quarter of a million dollars to refurbish, so considerable savings.
Absolutely. And of course, our most heavily-used vehicle are our ambulances, and those were financed by the council, with the exception of the make-yield vehicles, so that's a bid now.
This was, you mentioned that, that the, that this would come from the equipment fund?
Yes.
And I talked to Greg this morning, he talked a little bit about the fact that he passed that through a lot of the department heads to make sure.
We had a meeting with Rich.
Or a meeting with Rich, I guess, is, should we expect that something else will be pushed, something specific will be pushed significantly back from that?
Not significantly, but we cut back on some of the DPW replacement equipment.
We did have a, have some money left over from last year, because we didn't spend as much, but it will have some impact for a few years, in terms of how much. And that's where I've talked with Karen, that we probably need to sit down and talk about both the equipment and the IT fund, in terms of what we need to do to make sure that we have a stable, that those two funds are stable financially in the years ahead, because if they aren't, then it's going to come out of the general fund, any of those expenses, because that's the only other source of funding. So that is important, and we will be looking at that here over the next couple of months.
I guess for me, two things that really stand out, one, a big bang for the buck in the timeline, having to do this in short order, to be able to get something out of this truck that we're going to lose within the next few months. And the other part of that is, even with the DPW equipment and all the miles that we have on those, we know that they're coming up for replacement. Being able to have a vehicle, for me, to be able to send out and reduce the operating cost alone, it makes the most sense, so.
Sometimes you have to adjust, but priorities change, sometimes it'll be for DPW over other things, in this case, it was the fire, and we're looking at, we should be a number of years before we have to do anything with any of the other fire trucks.
I feel badly about the cutbacks in the DPW replacement schedule, it's time for my intent to take from one to give to another. However, I really think, and I think I have the concurrence of administration, that if we don't do that now, it's going to cost us twice as much in a few years, and then it's really going to make an impact.
Exactly.
So I think it makes sense, even though it did have unintended consequences.
Well, we'd like to replace them all, but the funds just aren't carried, you know, so. So I guess I would make a motion. So I guess I would make a motion that we authorize staff to put up a bid in the main for our replacement vehicle.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Okay, last up, resolution number two thousand fifteen dash oh-one, a resolution of support for matching funds for a Michigan Department of Transportation category A grant.
Well, I just wanted to set the record straight. He got his fire truck because he brought Greg Donuts.
Had to have been something.
I missed those somewhere. They must have got eaten before they got to my office.
Maybe they didn't make it through the clerk's office. I don't know.
Must have been amazing donuts if they got him a new truck.
Let's face it. You notice how it... What do you want? Back in October, city council authorized a resolution to support the apply for category A grant. What this is, this is the project that we talked about to develop a bypass road from Johnson Street up to Long Lake Avenue. That was submitted to the Michigan Department of Transportation. And basically, they flagged it because we were asking for a lot of money from them. We're not ready to give it to us. But they did have a number of questions. Since that time, we've come back. We've met with the Chamber on a couple of different occasions about it and about the development of a potential link between Long Lake and Johnson Street to support not only the brewery and the other development that's going to happen in the former O'Connor property, but also the businesses up in Commerce Industrial Park, you know, from Long Lake Avenue. Basically, MDOT said, "We're not going to give you seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars like you wanted. We're going to cap out at about a hundred and fifty thousand." Well, in order for us to facilitate that, we had to really kind of pull back a little bit and look at what we could undertake and what we could justify as far as the grant application. So at this point in time, we've cut it back to where we're going to... The project that we've got listed in the application goes from Johnson Street to the north property line of the brewery. It would terminate there. We would basically put a temporary cul-de-sac on the end, but that would be the extent of it. Along with it, we would put in new sewer, replace the existing sewer that services them, as well as replace the existing water that services. We go up that far. We hope that extensions in the future will be possible, but those are going to be predicated on if economic development activities occur in the north. The other thing that MDOT didn't like, we said that we were committing the local match. We didn't specify how much. So the new resolution basically states that Phase One of the bypass project from Johnson Street, seven hundred feet north to the north property, that is the proposed brewery property. This would be, would apply for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funds. It would match that with three hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-seven in funding in-kind services to complete Phase One of the project. And the way that works out, it's about two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the water and sewer infrastructure and about a hundred and fifty thousand in match funds from the local street fund to be matched to the MDOT fund. So it's about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Just to add to that, Adam is in the process right now. We are... We had initially planned on applying for two other grants. One through the MEDC, which would basically be an infrastructure grant out of community development block grant funds. However, after we went through a part of that process, actually spent a lot of time, Adam did, not me, but Adam. I just was there encouraging. Basically, we were told, "Oh, no, it's not going to work anyways, and there is not... You aren't going to be able to get funding through the MEDC." So that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we were looking at. That's gone. Adam is applying, though, for USDA funds, which we applied for, what, less than a hundred thousand? And they said probably if we get, which we're hopeful we will, about seventy-five. So that would be part of that local match, could be that grant. We did get, what was it, about seventy-four thousand?
Seventy-one-three, I think, is what it sticks in my head.
Which was additional money from MDOT because of the last winter, all the costs. So that we were dedicating towards this. So that helps. But it's still a considerable amount coming out of the street fund plus the water and sewer fund. This is as far as the sewer would have to run because the property to the north can then, you know, connect to the sewer where it is. However, the water, if, once we continue this, will continue on to connect into Long Lake Avenue in order to create that redundancy and to make sure we have better pressure. But that will be in the future. So that will continue, but the sewer is as far as it's going to go. There is no need to continue it beyond the point that we are.
We did also include thirty-five dollars in here for Donuts Bill to take to MEDC, USDA, anybody else, we can get to and see if we can get some money out of that.
Glad to help out, Rich.
Yeah, I know you are, buddy.
Well, let a few fire trucks up down. Well, let a few fire trucks up and down the road.
If council's supportive of this, like the grant application is in process, I believe February fourth is the next deadline for cemental. And we will have that application ready for cemental. We've had a number of conversations with the MDOT folks that administer the category A program. They're on board with it and are supportive of this project.
Rich, it seems like over the years, our match is usually about the same as the grant. And this one's a little bit more skewed against us, I guess. It seemed like a big investment. I guess what's the biggest benefit that we would get out of this?
This is a little bit last one for a simple thing. Just the category A grant funds are based on job creation. And we've had a lot of discussions with the MDOT staff over the dollars per job. What they've told us is downstate, they get four thousand, five thousand dollars a job. Here in northeast Michigan, we need... We're going to give you, you know, up to ten thousand dollars a job. That's phenomenal. Then we see an article that the brewery in Grand Rapids got nineteen thousand dollars a job from MDOT through the category A program. I got a lot of... Well, we had other things added to it and a lot of reasons why they got nineteen thousand dollars per job.
I suggested that we apply for nineteen thousand dollars a job just, you know, consistent with the Grand Rapids project and see what they say, but...
They basically committed that we would be able to leave the ten thousand dollars a job. So that's where it is. And, you know, the project costs are not cheap. The big thing here is right now, there's a piece of four-inch water main runs from Johnson Street up to Long Lake Avenue. And actually, right now, it's cut and capped in the middle because we had a section break in close proximity to the tracks. That needs to be replaced to get additional water supply up there. Center Sewer will open on that area for development. And there is... There has been some conversations with Target Alpena on development to the north there, to the north of the brewery site. And we've had a lot of discussions with Chamber of Commerce about developing that bypass road potentially between Long Lake and Johnson Street to shorten up and make those businesses up, shorten up the travel time and make those businesses more viable in servicing areas south of town and west of town.
Yeah, I don't... Because I was... That's kind of been a big thing, I guess, as far as even with the Chamber, the discussions that I've had with some of the local business people back in that area. I mean, it's a pretty big chunk of change to do that. And you're... One of the things you're looking at is what Jim spoke of as far as having turnkey properties. There's a limited amount of access in there right now. The other couple of things that Rich talked about and, you know, the business owners talk quite a bit about the fact of, and you've heard it before, as far as where they have to go, where their route has to go. Dave, one of the Daves came in and spoke directly to us about that once before as far as where the route goes and where he has to... He has to charge somebody for that fourteen miles of fuel one way that he has to use to get to any of his customers on the south side if he wants to do it legally. So by cutting that off, I mean, of course, it's not city property back there, so it's not property we need to have turnkey for the city like we do on twenty-three. And it's not our specific city money that's being spent on the fuel when a resident orders gravel. But I think, you know, and whether those add up to, you know, and how many years' worth of all of that and whether some big business wants to go back there, not only between Long Lake and Johnson, but even on, even businesses that may want to support the Long Lake Avenue back in that, but don't want to now because of where they have to travel to get to the south side of town. So, you know, who knows where that and when that payoff will be? But it all kind of started with just some kind of organized talks as far as what can we do just to make, just to alleviate some of the issues that this would alleviate. But, you know, I don't know where that, you know...
Some of the earlier conversation when we did the last request, you know, regarding traffic with, going past the college. We did meet with Dr. Joyton and I'm not sure of his position right now, Don McMasters, president-to-be, I guess, regarding the issue and things that... And we did look at improving the crosswalks and whatnot. But right now, our feeling is with what we're doing, it is not any different than... In fact, it's probably going to be less traffic than when we had Arrow Steel, Thunder Bay Moving, plus O'Connor, all there and operating. And most all that traffic went down to Miller Johnson Street. That basically serving what is now just the brewery is going to be far less traffic. And then we would... We did tell them when I responded back after that meeting that we would continue to evaluate this and look at it, especially once, if the second phase, when that moves forward. Because the costs that we were getting were quite high, more than we had expected. And so we felt we could look at other, or perhaps down the road, that costs may change. There may be new products out there that would be more cost-effective. And so rather than doing something right now where we felt there was not, at least certainly the issues that could potentially come with that bypass or by path road, truck route went in fully, that we would simply wait on that, but continue to look at it. But this is step one. This does provide, I think, no it's expensive. It does... We've always talked that that property, we've left industrial up there, even though there have been talks about not doing it or changing that, of leaving it. And by putting this road, even only going as far as we are, it basically opens up the rest of that land up there for development. And I think that's good, you know, for us. We don't have lots of areas that we can develop that are basically vacant. And that land up there was not, you know, shovel-ready before. But if we put this project in, it basically, in terms of utilities, will be because they'll have both water and sewer that they can tap into.
Adequate water.
Adequate water and sewer.
Well, Greg, and I guess Adam can answer if you want it, but from a planning perspective, it just seems like a weird spot. Is that a feasible area to develop? I mean, can we make that attractive beyond the infrastructure?
Yeah, I think so. Once you get the road in there, you're basically looking at other... Once you get past the brewery, there are two basic parcels. One that butts up against, just to the south of Elm Street, which enters onto Long Lake, just south of the Omni property. I think it's called... I don't know if that's Wolverine. I don't know which division that is, but the old DG trim. And then there's another parcel that is still owned by, was it Travis O'Connell? O'Connell?
O'Connor.
O'Connor, just to the south. And though, if you look at it, you could say it's landlocked. There is actually an easement in there that could connect, where they could connect right into that road, even where that ends. So all that property now becomes available and could be developed.
I missed one. It's not an easement, it's a right of claim.
Yeah, I was going to say that. I thought it was thirty-three feet. That's, yeah, it doesn't... It actually belongs to the city. So that could be used. So this does afford that, which we never had. I had tried back when we had the EPA grant of doing Phase One, Phase Twos, everything with all those property owners, which I think there were like six or seven, to then get them to market this as one large parcel. It might make it more attractive. The ones that we did where the fire were, they were all for it. They went through the process. Unfortunately, I sent letters, tried to make contact two or three times with the others and never got a response back. Now things are beginning to stir. So, you know, this, I think, will just simply help that a great deal if we're able to get this, even this first phase of the road in.
I think what this does is presents this a little bit area, again, as Jim was saying earlier, about shovel-ready areas, you know, it kind of is an improvement and will actually add attractiveness of that area in that area too. The other thing, I think we did speak on the whole project at one time about additional traffic. Obviously, I understand this isn't true, but, you know, I don't want to... I think for me, it's two different issues we need to look at. One is the safety at the college. I mean, that's always a concern for all of us. And the other is, you know, that road actually easing the ease of doing business for all those businesses that are on that side as well. So eventually, when it does go through that, we'll have to relook at that. But I think that this is a good thing overall. It's actually going to improve that site somewhat and actually give us another area that does look to be shovel-ready for additional businesses, smaller.
The other thing I don't think, I don't know if it's been mentioned to the council. When we first proposed, we were looking at there's that current easement and paved road that basically goes back to where the beer company will be, Austin Brothers. And that's where we were looking initially at putting the road. That is not the case anymore. Now it is on the other side, basically running parallel and pretty much adjacent to the railroad property. So we're moving the road away from the soccer fields and that. So that conflict, we're moving away from by not having the road right there next to the soccer fields. We do have to work with and will be making contact with the railroad because they own, it's a triangular piece of land. Actually, at both ends, kind of different areas that we're looking at, but here on Miller Street, Johnson, whichever it is, that we will have to cross. We're hopeful that they will not see that as an issue and will give us that permission to cross that property and they'll give us an easement, at the very least, to run that road over, to connect into Miller's.
That's kind of the fly-in movement right now. That's where we're making contact with them. But we do have backup contingency plans if the railroad just says we're not going to play cards with you guys.
I mean, if we have to move the road back over to the other side, where initially we can do that. But our preference would be to keep it along the railroad track.
The grant's probably not dependent on that, really, right?
It's, I mean, they're a few thousand dollars apart, no matter which one you have.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion already?
No.
I will approve resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero-one.
Second. Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson? Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure counts.